Okay, let's go on to correspondence from the, to the board.
Nothing.
I don't think we have any other letters. I know that we've had letters that were sent out, but nothing new have come in, has come in this week. So is anybody here? From Phoenix Remedies? It'd be online from Phoenix Remedies.
Hold on Denise has her hand up.
Okay. She muted maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Hi, I'm Denise Tice. I'm a consultant working with Phoenix Remedies. The principal was supposed to be here, but I don't think that, he might be in traffic.
Okay. You want us to move on in the agenda and wait for them to come, or do you want to talk about this?
I can talk about it. I'm happy to talk about it.
Denise, he's there in person.
Oh, is he? Oh, okay. Then Nate can talk about it if he's there.
Why don't you, why don't you come on up and sit at the table?
Oh, I didn't even see him. Perfect.
Great, welcome. Can you just introduce yourself?
Yes. Hi, I'm Nathan Pierre, CEO of Phoenix Remedies. We are looking to locate next to joint operations. The cannabis partner partners who owns joint operations is my prime, my principal investor. So I'll be locating essentially in their building.
And what's the address?
Forty-seven Milford Street, I believe.
Right on six, Route sixteen.
It's the, so it's Taylor. That we already have a host agreement for in that facility, right? We have one.
Correct. I believe they have product manufacturing and a dispensary in that building.
So what's Phoenix gonna do?
We're a delivery operator.
Got it. Okay. All right, got it. So that would be all three aspects of marijuana in.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any other questions? All right.
Mike Scott with our partners partnering with Nate is on call as well. If you guys have any questions for us as well.
Oh, that's Mike.
Yes, my only question was statement was that you reviewed the contract in order. If I can just speak to that here a second.
I'm sorry, who are you speaking to?
Cindy. I'm Tom Housen.
You're muted.
Cindy, I'm you.
What else is new? What did you ask me, Lonnie?
Actually.
So my question was that in the correspondence, it was indicated that you have reviewed the host agreement and everything's in order. I just wanted to confirm that and get your thoughts on that.
Yes, yes. I've looked at it. I've spoken with Denise and it does seem to be in order with the other host agreements we've had.
In one place, I just had to do one more question. So there's no issue with, with the three areas of this being on the same facility. There's no state law or any kind of that.
My understanding is they're separate, right?
They're separate entity. Yeah, so there are separate entities and in the cannabis industry, it's pretty common to see co-located different businesses because you know, those are approved zoning, you know, by the state. So it is pretty common to see this. And yes, there are separate entities there.
But it's manufacturing, sales and distribution, all in the same facility. Three separate businesses.
Yes. Correct.
Okay. Well, if there are any other questions, I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to authorize town administration to enter into marijuana host agreement with Phoenix Remedies LLC at forty-seven Milford Street.
Right. Motion been made in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
On behalf of Easton, I just want to thank the town of Mendon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great, great town to work with. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, next on the agenda is considered purchase and sale agreement for thirty-six Milford Street, which was crossed from the drive-in in the end zone. This is the storage facility. I think Jack, you were going to talk to us about that, right?
Yes, as you recall, we put this property out to bid. Then we received two, two bids on it. The selectmen, the previous three selectmen chose a preferred app or bidder, which was Pro Self Store or Patriot Holding, rather, which is a self-storage facility. And town meeting authorized you guys to enter into a purchase and sale and sell the property. Cindy and I have been working with them around and around, going back and forth. There's a lot of moving parts in this purchase and sale, notably that they have to subdivide the property. And they're subdividing it technically into three areas. One would be to leave the, excuse me, the, the solar portion as a standalone parcel. Obviously, the other standalone would be the self-storage area, and they are also donating part of their purchase as open space to the Muddy Brook Conservation Area. They also, in the purchase and sale, is the transfer of forty thousand dollars to the town to develop open space trails, et cetera, on this new area. And for them to build a six to eight car parking lot for the open space. And to also maintain the access road to the solar panels, which the town currently maintains. And lastly, you will have the benefit of seeing a concept plan on how they plan on buffering and softening, if you will, the appearance of the storage panels, I mean, the storage facility to Route sixteen. That was an issue that the previous selectmen were concerned about. So all those things have to happen in, in order, and it's outlined in the PNS. And then, um, once that's done, at some point, they can go to the planning board. They'll have to get approval from the planning board for site plan review, and then you'll have a, can sell the property. So you can understand why it went around and around, but we're, I know Cindy approved it last week, I think it was.
And there's, there's an easement that's that goes up in the back for the, for the solar, and that's a, that's a permanent, permanent right of way, right?
Well, today, the property is owned by the town, and you're right, there's an easement for the solar company, which leases land from the town to always have that access, and that will remain.
I do have some questions on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it will remain, be maintained by the, are we selling that? Is that easement, is that land still owned by the town, or is that part of the sale?
That will be part of the sale. They have not defined the exact borders. When we put it out to bid, we put that out to bid as well. But they decided they didn't need the entire parcel that we put out to bid. So the line has not been defined. In the PNS, they are required to maintain the easement and keep the easement in perpetuity.
Okay, so keep the easement in perpetuity, and that includes if they sell their property?
Correct.
Correct. Who would then have that? Who would, who would need to maintain that easement if they were to sell?
Based on this, whoever they sell it to. So the, so the need to maintain it in perpetuity would, would transfer with the new owner. In other words, if they were to sell this, that would be part of the order. It would have, that, that's my understanding when we talked about it.
Yep.
I didn't see in perpetuity in the PNS.
Yeah, I haven't.
That, that, that'll be defined in the easement.
You're, Cindy, I'm.
No wonder no one listens to me. When you have an easement, it's, it runs with the land and it's recorded, and this is a recorded easement, so it will run with the land. It does not extinguish upon your sale of the property or theirs.
Yeah, but I think the question is, the idea, right now, we're maintaining it. When we sell it, they're going to have to maintain it.
Correct.
So that would be modified in the easement, and it will be maintained in there.
Yeah, there's, there's no risk to the solar parcel having any issues if down the line, their lease ends and we choose to do something else with that land. I, I just want to make sure we're not limiting what we could do with that land in ten years.
But my, my memory was, and maybe someone can correct me, that when we did this, this solar deal and, and the selling it to National Grid, I thought part of that, the conditions were that National Grid had that access forever. I thought that was something that went on, would be, went beyond the lease, no?
I can't answer all of that, but remember that the solar company only has a twenty-five year lease.
Right.
I assume the easement runs with that lease, but I'm not privy to that. Either way, either way, we hear what you're saying. It's a good question. And you're going to have another shot at that easement, as will Cindy, when, before you actually sell the property.
I guess my biggest thing is you gotta make sure we don't lose access or mitigate any risk to our future use of that solar.
My, but my thought, when, when, when the discussion went on a few years ago, was that they had this twenty-five year lease. There was access. National Grid, you know, wanted that access. But if the lease ended, the connection was gone, then they've got nothing to access, right? So it was never an issue.
It's your land and the easement, they have to maintain an easement, and the easement runs with the land. I can't imagine why, if you need that easement to access the remaining property that you own, why you would not keep that easement as part of the sale.
The way it was explained to me when I asked back then, was just what you said, that the easement just, it, it doesn't mean we don't have access. It just means that, that National Grid would potentially have access for as long as they want it or need it.
So the easement, so the, the easement is there to access the backland.
Right, correct.
So regardless of who we're leasing to or not, it's still, now it's going to be our easement essentially. They're using it to get to the backland. If the lease expires, we still have that easement, so we can access the back.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
I move to sign up.
Yeah, any other questions?
I moved to sign, sorry. I moved to sign the first, moved to sign the purchase and sale agreement for the town-owned property thirty-six Milford Street between the town of Mendon and Patriot Holdings LLC, the purchase price of four hundred thousand dollars.
Second, all right. Made in second. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed.
Hey, issue six, consider a one-day special alcohol license, ended up in youth soccer. We've done this before, right?
For the Oktoberfest, Stocktoberfest.
Stocktoberfest.
It goes that every year that they've been doing it. I think only one year it wasn't at the park. It was, ended up being in the club gymnasium. But yeah, I approve one day special alcohol license for the alcohol beverages for October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, from six PM to ten PM at Royal Park, pending receipt of positive records.
All right, motion made in second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Number seven, one day special alcohol license for Barbell eighty-eight Inc. We did this last year again, right?
Yep. This is up in the
Twenty-eight Hastings Street. Yep.
The old empty.
Yeah.
Andre, is Andre with us? I move to approve a one-day special alcohol license for all beer and malt beverages only for September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, twelve to seven, twelve PM to seven PM at the Fenton area of twenty-eight Hastings Streets, pending receipt of positive records.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you very much. Number eight. I was told that this, this, is there anybody from the Housing Authority on the, on the meeting? Well, there was a there was an open, open spot on the Housing Authority, and this gentleman replied. Ellen, do you know, how long has it, the, the time hasn't expired, right? Do we think there was going to be somebody else who might, or there may be time for somebody else to apply?
The letter that the director Jackie sent out, or actually she put at the Housing Authority's common area, said they had until August nineteenth to express interest. I've only gotten one letter of interest thus far.
All right. I don't think it's a pressing matter. I did ask to have it put on here, but we've got a meeting scheduled on the twenty-ninth, so I'm just going to table it. Let's see if there's anybody else who is interested. So let's move on to number nine, considering signing state primary warrant. Ellen, do you want to explain that for us?
Um, just your standard warrant for the upcoming primary. It requires your signature, so I can post it two weeks before. I'll post it as soon as you guys sign it, but, uh, listing the state offices that will be on the ballot for the primary.
Do I have a motion?
Just sign the state primary warrant for Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, seven AM, eight PM.
Second.
All right.
Not that we need to, but is this one of those ballots that you could not look bad. I know we've already made the appointment for the Board of Health, but this would be one of those areas where you could picky back a special election, correct?
No, no, not on the primary.
What about the November one?
November one does have a deadline. Um, if you chose to have a it would be a dual election, basically. You double, I would have to have double check-ins, double.
And they'd have to be, they'd have to be two different ballots, and we discussed that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, it was just not.
Yeah, I agree.
And that would be the day I tender my resignation.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
It's up.
Second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous. Number ten, early voting hours.
I move for that in person, early voting weekday hours from nine AM to three PM during the period of August twenty-nine through September one, twenty twenty-two, as required by Section seventy-two, MGL, Chapter fifty-four, which was changed in Section ten, Part fourteen of Chapter ninety-two of the Acts of twenty twenty-two.
All right, motion made in second. Ellen, what, what, can you just talk about early voting and mail-in voting, and just so we can get it on the record for everybody?
Sure. Um, so the, the state passed the Votes Act and which set guidelines for, we're a town of less than five thousand voters, so we have certain guidelines that we can go for, for early voting. Everybody can vote by mail if they choose to, but we also have to have early voting in-person hours. One week's worth, basically, but because we're less than five thousand, I only have to do one weekend day for four hours, and then my weekday hours, I only have to do twenty-five percent of my regularly scheduled hours, which is eight to four, Monday through Thursday. And because access is so available to a ballot by mail, I don't think that we need to do one hundred percent of my open hours. So I've reduced it to seventy-five percent. I could go down all the way to twenty-five percent if I wanted to. But I didn't do that. We'll see how the primary goes. We usually don't have a very big turnout in person for primaries. That said, I am getting a lot of applications for ballots. So maybe the turnout will be a little better, but I still think that in-person early voting won't be very, I mean, I think I got ninety people for the president, not the president, the presidential primary in person, two years ago. So it's not a lot of people. And if they want to come in during my regular hours, I gave myself an hour buffer in the morning and an hour buffer in the afternoon just to tidy up things. But will be done in my office, basically, in the room behind me if, if it's open.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, it's, early voting is from nine to, nine AM to three PM, August twenty-ninth to September first, twenty twenty-two.
In person.
In person, in your office, on the, on the bottom floor in the town hall.
So if they choose not to, if they choose not to go to the polls, or if they choose not to get a ballot mailed to them, they have this other option. They can come in person early. And it will be, they'll come to the clerk's office, check in there, we'll give them a ballot, and they can fill it out right there.
And do you know, just off the top of your head, what, when is actual primary voting day?
September sixth.
September sixth.
Yeah, so it's a week later, and the deadline to apply for ballots by mail, whether they're early ballots or absentee, is August twenty-ninth.
So if somebody wants to vote early, they have to apply for a ballot by mail?
Not necessarily by mail. If they want to vote early in person, their application will be showing up at my window.
So if somebody can just walk in in any of those days to your office when you're open and vote?
Yep. As long as they haven't already asked and received a ballot from them, then yes, they can do that.
Okay. All right. All those in favor? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Just a quick question. I'm so on the mail-in ballots. I didn't get my thing in the mail. Are they, is it the same procedure as an absentee ballot?
Yes, it is the same procedure as an absentee ballot. You fill out the application, you check off what you want, and we mail it out. The only difference is one envelope says absentee, one envelope says early voting. But the process of us, the entire process is the same from the beginning to the end. And one thing that's different this year, on forever now, is that if an absentee is received in the office now, you used to be able to go to the polls because if it hadn't been cast yet, you could change your mind and go to the polls and vote. That's not the case anymore. You, once we receive it and accept it, you're absent, you can't go to the polls anymore and change your mind.
All right. So item eleven is this, assigning police details to elections. Now, this is nothing new, but I'm, I understand as the laws change. Is that right?
That's correct. I'm not sure why. Um, so in the, previously, if I need, I've always used a police officer at the polls. I would send an email to the chief or the sergeant at the time, and they would assign an officer or two for the day, depending on whether it was a full shift or a half shift. The legislature says we now have to have the select board vote to allow the police, tell the police department that they are to give us the appropriate amount of police officers for elections. So I'm hoping that the way this one's worded, it will be a one-time vote, and we won't have to do this again.
So in other words, this is a one-time vote to, for us to instruct the chief of police to provide the precision and out of police officers to do what we've already been doing forever anyways. Cindy? You're muted again. You're doing this on purpose.
I know. I'm seeing if you're really paying attention to what I'm saying. There's one little nuance to that, and that is for each election cycle, you would have a vote, you would need a new vote every year, just to confirm that there hasn't been a change in either the number of buildings that they're going to be ballots or, or, you know, people receiving ballots and voting. But yes, you can do it once. You don't have to do it every election. You would have to do it every time the places will change.
So in other words, we.
For once in a, you know, an election period.
Yeah. I feel like you just said two different things there. I feel like you just said do I only have to do it if, if our polling place changes or during an election cycle?
So which is it?
Under the new law, you're supposed to, in consultation with the election officials and registrars, detail a sufficient number of police officers for each building. That means you determine per election cycle, how many you need per building. Now, I can't imagine that as long as the buildings remains constant, that you would have a different requirement.
Right. Right, so we don't have any anticipation of changing our polling location. We just went to two, so it'll probably be another twenty years before you have to go to three.
But even then, we didn't really change the location. We just ended up with two precincts, and they're both still in the same place. So I'm, I'm still getting right.
For a cycle, or if we have to change the polling place, or, or change the number? We, we need to do this every time?
You have to do it once a year in the event that something does change. I think it's just refreshing the certification of authorizing details.
Okay, so we'll do it, but completely other ways.
Yeah, my, my, what I'm, my understanding was that we had to do it this first time, and we wouldn't have to do it again unless the polling place changed. But you're saying that we've got to do this once a year prior to election season regardless?
I would suggest doing that because, as Ellen will agree, the law is less than clear. And there's no guidance, and this is the first time it's going into that, and all it really is requiring is a one-time voter to meeting.
Right.
It's not a heavy lift. And the reason for it is to make sure that if there are changes, that they get captured so that everyone gets to vote.
My, my only.
You don't have a situation where people are in jeopardy for their health or their safety by going to a polling place.
I, I think our.
Nothing will change, really.
I, I think our only concern is we have a vote today and everything's all set for this year, and if for some reason we, we don't do the vote next year, does that some kind of invalidate something?
Yeah, all right, we just make sure.
Next year's enough election year anyway.
Yeah.
It's, this is a state requirement, not for local elections?
Sorry, for state elections.
It's for state elections.
Okay.
So twenty twenty-three won't have any.
Okay.
Unless there's a special election.
And by then, there'll probably be more guidance on it, and quite frankly, I, what if nothing has changed and you do not vote, I do not believe that they would do anything drastic, like invalidate the votes that came in. The, the real thing is it's a prudent thing just to make sure, because we don't have any more guidance than the sentences they gave us in the law, and it's not been implemented yet, so.
Okay.
Right.
I move to approve.
We'll keep you posted.
I move to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one, at the polling location at every election there, and to preserve order to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by Section seventy-two of MGL, Chapter fifty-four, which was changed in Section thirteen of Chapter ninety-two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-two. Further, right, further, move to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability. The town clerk will advise the police chief on the location and time the officer needs to be.
Second.
All right. All right. All those, oh, Cindy has her hand up. Yes.
All right, maybe I misheard you, Lonnie, but I, I believe you have to designate a number per building. So if it's one building, one officer, instead of saying a sufficient number, you, you have to actually designate the number.
Well, we did, we designated, but not less than one at the polling location at every election. And we only have one polling place. So he did define that in the language.
Having you used in the past, only one?
Yes.
Yes, just one. They'll split us, sometimes they'll split a shift, but it's still like one.
One at a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. Consider special town meeting dates. I know we, we need to pick a date. And we looked at the calendar, I, I talked to the town clerk about this. Ellen, do you want to just explain why November third is the, is the best date?
Oh, I can't remember what I said. Okay, so I have, typically we do that, that, you know, seventeenth or whatever week of November. I don't have a calendar in front of me. But I'm in a conference that week, so I'm not available. The week following is Thanksgiving, the week before is the state election on the eighth. The ninth, we could do it, but I'll be, it'll be a pretty busy day for me. The tenth is our holiday for Veterans Day. And I'm gonna be in Maryland at a wedding. So the week before is better.
What about the twenty-ninth? I'm sorry.
There's nothing wrong with that if you want to go that late.
So can I ju- can I just add here? Normally, I think the past couple of years, we have been certifying free cash early enough that this wouldn't be an issue. I'm just, I mean, I'm just slightly concerned with the timing being so early, only because we, they have to close out year end with our old system and we're also trying to integrate into a new system. So as much time as we can get in November, I think would be helpful. I, I don't personally mind. I mean, Thanksgiving week, the twenty-second hasn't been an issue. Um, because we still have Wednesday, there's still work, days of work, right? And the following week isn't an issue either. And then maybe next year, once we've got all our ducks in a row, maybe we'll be able to move it all the way up and that would be great.
So does, well, the, picking the third versus the twenty-ninth really has, that only has to do with the state certifying free cash. We've got to get it turned in sometime later in, in, in September anyways, right?
Yeah, exactly. It'll be turned in by then, but the earliest that we've had it back has been like last week of October. I mean, we were sweating it a couple of times, second to last week of October. And I mean, let's face it, a lot of what we're doing in special town meeting is allocating that free cash, right? So it, it just, I'm not anticipating. I mean, who knows? I shouldn't say it aloud, but like, an outrageous number of articles, right? At this moment, we can open the warrant, so the majority would be these financial articles, you're, everyone's smirking, but right, but um, I, if they're, if they're primarily financial articles, then, and it'll be a quick meeting, then twenty-second or twenty-nine is fine.
I, I should have said, I can also do Monday, the fourteenth, which is the day before I leave for the conference. I could do that day. Which is the normal week we normally do. So that's, that's on the table too.
Just later. I don't
So is there, is there any downside to doing it later?
No, I always thought it was kind of the later, I, I feel like, I feel like it was that. It was always the week
It was always just before Thanksgiving.
Cause I was always, it was always on a Tuesday and you were always
Right.
Doing that thing in Worcester we do and I was always never there.
There's, so there is something, don't, don't catch, something about getting the tax bills out, right? Enough time to get the tax bills out. That was always another thing that had to do with getting it done. Super late in the year or making sure the tax rate was set or modified and then we cut the right bill or something. So that was always an issue.
The Kellyanne Ryan prints
Right.
When, cause it's coming in in December and they print them for January first, right?
Right. I thought we wanted to get the tax rate set before this town meeting, so in the past we have, haven't we?
Can we usually get the tax rate set? Do you have a special?
The tax, the tax rate's already set.
We have a meeting typically in November about this. I'm not sure.
I feel like it's after the meeting.
Yeah, I, I, because I think we, because deter- Don't, I'm a little foggy today, but based on what I remember, right? The amount of money or whatever we choose to raise on the recap or not raise on the recap or the possibility of using free cash towards operational expenses or changing the budget, amending the budget up until that point could have an impact on the tax rate that we then I want, I don't want to say recertify, that doesn't seem like the right word, but recalculate or formalize or confirm and then the tax bills go out from that.
So I'm looking, I'm looking at the calendar here at, at the, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving, which is November twenty-ninth. Is there any reason why anyone couldn't do that date?
I'm gonna look at last year.
It works for me.
All right, anybody else have any?
But yeah, last year's meeting, did we walk in and just do two financial articles with three?
No, that was, that was
That was twenty twenty. Last year was like forty-five.
I think that was you, me and Dan, you, me and Dan buyer. And buyer, right?
Tax rate recap post STM discussion, so that definitely is happening in that week. Just looking at what we did last year.
Is that okay?
I'd say it's fine. We'll leave it for now. We'll say it's the twenty-ninth, worst case scenario, we got to pivot to the week before, so be it, right?
Yeah, or even the fourteenth, like we said, so.
Well, well, no, let, if, if, if it's not a big deal to pick the fourteenth or fifteenth, let's do it now. I'd rather not change it. I'd rather
But I can't do the fifteenth.
Monday, the fourteenth, is that okay with everybody? You want to do a special town meeting on a Monday night?
There's no good time, Monday nights, Friday nights, Saturday morning, we've tried, right? We've tried them all in the last two years, so.
It's always
The one thing that comes to mind right now is, we've talked about these different potential dependencies on this happening or that happening. We've never confirmed other dependencies are or they're not. So I think maybe clarifying what potential dependencies are between all these different actions.
Yeah, but the, the only, the only dependency, to use your language, is we, we cannot you know, accept the free cash and appropriate it unless it's been certified.
That's it.
That's it. That's the only thing that's, because the things we need to do at the town meeting, you know, as far as moving the money is based on that and that's
And it's generally the, the week
Yes.
For that week of the fourth, the week before Thanksgiving is generally the week we do it because that's one of
And why do we talk about other things if there's no dependencies on the question at hand?
It's kind of usually because that's the way we always do it, but there's no reason, right? So.
All right, so what number are we on?
So not
Twelve.
So we're gonna go with the fourteenth, right?
Yeah.
Is that where we're at?
Yeah, Monday, November fourteenth. Do I have a motion?
Need a motion? Hold on. It just says consider dates. Oh, yeah. No, it just says to consider the date. We'll just set the date and then we
So we don't have to do
When we certify the
Okay, so she's shaking her head, so we just, all right. All right. All right.
It's the fourteen.
That's it. So discuss
Just, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Share the uh, the reference here to anytime after a fourteenth. Based on uh, DLS, free cash, figured it's fourteen, the later is fine.
Yep.
Yes.
That's what I would say. Again, I think we, like I said, we've even done it in October, we already had a generally, we have, we always say November to be safe.
Right, and it's, and it's all dependent on the state because we've got the numbers turned in by the end of September. So we're just waiting for DOR to come back and give it to us. Right, right. All right, thirteen, uh, discuss facade improvement program. Kim, you want to talk about that or?
I think that's me.
Okay, Jack, thank you.
What I might say, he's afraid of what
I'm always afraid of her. In that way. I, I don't know if you guys remember, but uh, about, right, right before I started, uh, the rapid recovery response consultants were in Mendon trying to prioritize some of the actions that the town would like to take. And the number one one was conduct a water and sewer study, which I'm pleased to tell you that we're doing as we speak.
Pause you for a second. That local rapid recovery program was a grant that the state offered uh, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty that we applied for and received that provided technical assistance facilitators to come out and help identify needs within the community.
Right, and they worked with the Board of Selectment, all the boards, all the boards. And I, I kind of got here on the tail end of that, but um, like I said, water and sewer was a, a large component of it. Another component was to try and see if we could get funding for a facade improvement program. Um, I was approached, oh gosh, it's probably almost a, a year, oh, ten months ago by Blackstone Chamber of Commerce that they were going to have a open competition for some ARPA monies that they had. And encouraged us to apply. And I mentioned the facade improvement program as a possibility and we were encouraged to find another town to have a regional or joint application. I found the town of Upton, we applied for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and lo and behold, we didn't get it. I got another phone call back in probably February from the Mass Office of Business Development for, I know the director fairly well. And he really wanted us to apply again, but for half the money. So we did that and lo and behold, we received it, I don't know, in April, I think it is. And the whole concept is um, we will um, solicit applications from businesses and or property owners in a designated area. And I'm just speaking obviously in, in Mendon now, uh, Upton would duplicate it. And it would be a matching grant, a deferred grant that if um, so up to ten thousand dollars, so the applicant would also have to match whatever they need. So if it's ten thousand from us, it's ten thousand from them. They would have a twenty thousand dollar uh, 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 program to you know, beautify their facade, being a storefront, a sign, maybe some landscaping, anything to beautify it and make it more attractive to our downtown. The ten thousand from this grant would be a deferred loan. Um, it would be a loan for ten years and as long as they have not altered whatever work they've done or sold the property or business, um, that loan would be forgiven. It's, and this is all very similar to a program I ran many years ago and other towns have run. Um, so, you know, we only got sixty thousand, we have a, a maximum of ten thousand per facade. So it's really, we're gearing it toward two, a maximum of two or a minimum of two facades in Mendon, two in Upton. We would use seventy-five hundred dollars to um, procure the services of an architect who would make themselves available to the facade owner if they needed it. And we needed someone to develop this program and administer it, the, you know, you, there's not enough of me. And the planner in Upton is part-time as well. So we would like to have CMR PC uh, administrate this program. It's very complicated, can be, a lot of negotiations. Um, and I believe Laura's not here, but I believe you have a contract with them in front of you to administer the program. We are very close to having a, a, a public uh, notice go out and then start to send letters to all the business and property owners and then start soliciting individual. We'll have a deadline. If we get more than, uh, more applications than money, we're going to analyze them and bring them to you. And you'll have to unfortunately make a tough decision. And, and I should note that, you know, they could apply for less money and then we can spread it out more. So we uh, that's what we've come up with. Um, I wanted to get that contract to hopefully sign. We met with Cindy and Jody and Eric Kincherf and Kim, and that was one of the things that they thought we needed to do as quickly as possible.
Well, the, the contract I'm looking at is, is a place for the executive director of CMR PC to sign and Kim to sign as the town administrator. So I think our vote is to authorize Kim to execute this.
Correct. And, and I should note that Cindy did look at the contract.
Yes. You know, if, if I'm, if I'm, Jack, correct me, but I think this is the facade of, of businesses in the, in the town. That's why they talk about a loan that'll be forgiven in ten years as long as they don't sell the property. And is that right, Jack?
Correct. I, I don't know what the question was, I'm sorry.
The, the question was, what facade are we talking about? Is it a facade of the town hall? Or is it the facade of a private business?
It has to be a business, commercial, office or nonprofit.
And I, I think it, I don't, not certain, but I think it has to be within the map that I originally submitted
Correct.
Um, when I applied for the grant a couple of years ago and basically that map is from the bottom of the hill, you know, in front of the drive-in, all the way up to the muffin house, that stretch right there.
Up to where?
I think it's up to Hood Plaza. I think it's from the bottom of the hill to Hood Plaza.
Is it on, on sixteen, on, on Hastings and Oxbridge Road or is it?
Mostly, mostly.
Most, Milford and Hastings, right? Cause Hastings ends.
Yeah, I, I should add one other plug is that I've been working with EDC on this. I've met several times on them kind of refining it, if you will, and, and I think they helped pick that, that target area. Oh, last thing, last thing is that one, one of the conditions of us accepting this was that Mendon is the lead community. I think that had something to do with my relationship with MOBD, but.
If, if, if there were a facade within the historic district that we set up, that needed, that they wanted to go forward and change, they're still subject to review by the district committee, right?
And, and that's in our um, our regulations, if you will, or our procedures that, yeah, they'd have to go twice. They'd have to go to them and then get their facade approved or whichever comes first, it wouldn't matter.
So part of the process is to have the historical commission have a buy-in or a review on.
This is purely
On, on the ones that are in the district.
Yeah, so, so Jack, this is purely a program to fund beautification of, of facades within Mendon. The total pool is sixty thousand dollars, is that right?
That's for both towns.
Okay, so it's a thirty thousand.
Correct.
How much of that goes to CMR PC?
Is the ten thousand, twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand five hundred.
For both towns, correct? I mean, they're servicing both.
No, that's for both total, yeah. And then we, we just budgeted seventy-five hundred for an architect. We may use it all, we may not.
That's, that's twenty thousand off the top of the sixties. Thousand for to each town and the grants can be of whatever amount we choose if there's a lot of but this board has to choose a winner if there's more applicants than funding allows.
And it's not to say we couldn't add more money to it, but this is what they're providing.
That's correct. Yeah, yeah. I mean, they have been successful, these programs.
Right.
Again, I, I don't think anybody's saying it's not going to be successful. I just think that as we just chip away at this amount of money. So it's, it's a total of sixty, which gives thirty to Mendon roughly, right? So then we just said you take
Yeah, but I don't think it's, is it that the, because the number at the bottom here, was it twelve thousand, I think to?
Yeah, they're allocating seventy-five hundred for Yeah, they're allocating 7,500 for architecture if it's needed, and then set 12.5 for the CMR PC, which is 20, so you got 40.
So is.
You got 20, 20K in seed money.
Just to understand, is it, is it, is it 12,000 out of the 60 or 12,000 out of the 30?
12,000 out of the 60.
Okay, so 12,000 comes off the top of both towns. So there's about, what's that, 48,000 left? And the 48 would be split in half, which is 24 each.
Because we need money for an architect.
Okay, right, I get that.
As a program, this is just seed money, right?
Correct.
To start, is there any opportunity that the state might fund it further or any further funding to match the business monies needs to come from the town going forward?
Well.
I think if it's successful, if it has a good track record, we don't screw it up, and there's a lot of people, a lot of businesses wanting to use it, I think, yeah.
Now, I I will say that I talked to our, talked to to Brian Murray, our state rep, on Friday or Saturday, and what he told me was that he had put in, there were two buckets of money for Menden. One was a $75,000 earmark, maybe earmark's not the right word in the budget, for the town hall campus. And then there's 100,000 for economic development. So potentially, some of that could be used for something like this. Now, that was on Friday. If you saw the news today, there's some 1980s era law that maybe the whole budget isn't going to go the way they thought because they've got to refund a bunch of money to pay, so who knows what it is? But there is other buckets of money out there.
So I'm all for taking seed money to start a program like this. That's it's just more making sure we understand what kind of life it could have or.
Yeah.
Going. I also want to understand, to what extent is the Economic Development Committee involved in this? And should they be playing a role?
Well, not not today in this part, because it's us that have to authorize this.
It's a great question. The last I met with them, which I think was like two weeks ago, they really, you know, I did offer them, do they want to help with the decision-making, et cetera? And and two things came up is they didn't think the applicant should have to go through another board, you know, to, they could theoretically then have to go in front of the Historic Commission, the EDC, and then ultimately the Selectment. And also, they thought it should, the buck should stop with you. So they were fine with what we're proposing.
I I'm really all for collaboration, Jack. So I think this actually is right up their alley, and they should be actively involved, even to the point of possibly filtering, possible making recommendations to which projects they think warrant.
I I think that's what we would do it, is right, we.
I'd be glad to do that.
When we get there is to submit them to them and let them vet them and then bring us the finals.
But the execution, we can never take like the Historic District Committee out of the conversation. That's an existing bylaw. That's implementation, the process to choose is what I'm talking about and monitor the program. Does that make sense?
Yes.
We will never forget the Historic Commission or the Historic District Committee while I'm on this board.
Yeah, especially when they're sitting right in front of us. In present, in in person, right? Yes. Well, that's a different, it's a different issue. Like I said, this is, this is seed money to improve the facade of businesses in that particular area. So it was a separate grant, and certainly it would be incorporated into the master plan, I guess, or it should fit in that goal, but it's not. In other words, this this is going forward, whether the master plan was there or not. Does that make sense?
But similar to Ann's presentation last week when we did the preservation program, I think, Lonnie, there's an economic chapter in the master plan, right? You cannot develop a chapter.
Yep.
We should dovetail this, to your point, Jane, into that chapter to make sure it's called out, because we should take credit for actions being taken as it aligns to that plan.
So sure, but all I'm saying is, all we're doing right now is is just the the final step of this grant application process and this process here.
But I, this doesn't have anything to do with the master plan, this piece right here. This just is is a grant that's going to be overseen by CMR to to get help from CMR PC, who is currently well helping with our master plan, that any of these improvements should play into whatever we're putting, whatever our master plan is saying for economic.
Right.
But I don't think that this is a piece of it. Yes. Don't mind my dog.
Okay, so. I I have, I don't think we've gotten a motion yet.
Yeah, so I move to authorize the town administrator entering a facade improvement program project agreement with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. That's it, period.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, I just want to, you're welcome, Jack. I I just want to go back. This is just kind of a housekeeping thing. We picked a date for the special town meeting, and I know we don't have to vote that, but do we need to vote to open the warrant for the special town meeting?
And in the date that we need to vote to open the warrant, and then the day that it will close is Monday, September 26th.
Both open the special town meeting warrant, which will be held November 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Misco Hill School Auditorium. The warrant will close September 26th, 2022.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have meeting minutes approved for 5:25, 6:08, and 6:22.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Lonnie, do you want to talk about the about the Rock the Block?
Sure, so what I have here tonight is I I think we already did this vote once before, talking about using money from the.
350th, right?
Yep, 350th. I don't, I I didn't remember, so that was really the only update I had other than that if we, if we've already voted it, then we don't need to do it again. If if we do need to vote it, if we could, we do have some invoices starting to come in, such as the stage, they wanted a 50% deposit. The monies that were just starting the solicitation of the donations now, we saw the paperwork done. So that was, we're going to be, the monies come in, which we'll reimburse, you know, we we expect to have a lot of money.
And I I have an email I have to forward to you, I received from the Paw Sox.
Okay.
They are looking, well, the Woo Sox, they're looking for places in Menden that they can help sponsor and, yeah.
Do they want to come down and do?
Yeah, that's, I'll send it to you. I got it, yeah.
So we we did try, we did go back, Laura went back today, they'll try to look through the meeting minutes to see if we officially voted on it. We didn't, but we discussed it. We talked about using the money for the 350th, so you should make a motion to use that money in that account. I'll just remind you, there's $28,769 in there. That money was approved before we knew that we had received an earmark from the state in order to fund the 350th, so it's just, it's been sitting there since that time. So it has no other use, with the exception of returning it to free cash.
So I'd be looking for a motion to give permission to spend the money in that account that was earmarked for this purpose.
Earmark for which purpose?
For town celebrations, like the.
It was the originally the 350th, which we did here, didn't get used.
But it wasn't identified for the 350th, but it was for town celebration. It was identified for a specific event, I mean, like, I'm not sure, we can just.
When we talked about, I I remember talking about it after the event and from the FinCom, and and it was, you know, left in that special account to be to be used for for a subsequent town celebration. So that's the motion I'd be looking for.
I'll just add that this, we've been working with the town accountant in order to figure out what the process is in order to access those funds, and he said all we needed was a simple vote from the select board authorizing the use of those funds from that account for this event.
Sorry, what is the account labeled?
They, well, it's in KBS. You'd have to look at the exact motion.
Let's just, is there any any urgency to table till the end of the month?
Well, they're spending, they have invoices now.
Yeah.
So in in KBS, it's listed as.
Probably pay personally.
No, 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 no.
I was trying to keep it clean though.
No, no, there's no reason to do that. Let me look. We should be able to look at SharePoint, right? And look at that.
KBS SharePoint, I think, Kim was asking.
We're in the budget.
Yes, so in, no, in KBS, it's listed as 350th celebration. Now, what the actual verbiage was of the vote at that STM, we'd have to have Alan look at, but my guess is that it probably said, right? Our actor, Anna, there too. So like I said, but we have been able this year, and I'm not sure if it's a new accounting change, or if it's, we're able to use, as we have been downstairs utilizing, old closeout accounts for purposes, as long as there's approval in advance, so any funding source could be used for any. So as far as accounting is concerned, this would be a proper use now. Do you want to go back to town meeting and ask, did we have to revote it? We could do that too, but the the event is September 20th, right? So.
September 10th. So, hold on, what if we did this? What if we voted it with the idea that this is the right way to do it? And then get clarification before.
Yeah, we do a contingent.
Yeah, contingent on, right. Right.
Cindy was nodding her head, so I'm just curious as to what her thought.
I didn't start talking. I haven't really looked at this issue yet, but I'll be happy to look at it with Kim over the next week or two and be able to come up with what's the easiest process we can do to get these funds used as quickly as possible.
So I'd be looking for a motion to allow the use of the leftover from the 350th celebration contingent on it being determined proper by town council in the account.
So moved, second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I need another, I need another motion for being able to accept donations for the block party.
Okay, how do you want that worded?
I'd be looking for a motion, a motion from the select board to accept any and all donations made to the town for the earmarked for the Rock the Block Party on on September 10th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Be looking for a motion for adjournment.
It's just a quick question.
Yes.
It had to do with, I think it was a CBA meeting. And I read the meeting minutes that for the meeting I was in here, we talked about coverage for other committees.
Yes.
Do we want to put that on the next agenda to kind of?
Sure.
Analyze what we.
Sure.
And you want to, do we, I wasn't there for the meeting with the process, where we send, figuring out how we want to align ourselves against different committees.
Well, the discussion we had at the time was any, if anybody wanted to serve on a particular committee, they could just send me an email.
Okay.
That's all. Okay.
Jack, wait, just. Or participate, be a point, right, point of contact.
All right, just to be.
Just like, just like you're on the on the master plan committee, same thing. If there's any, any, anybody that wanted to become a designee, and we can now, we can have up to two at any meeting, because they don't represent a quorum.
Nice to have an alternate for, you know.
Exactly.
Go both to go to hell.
Right, right. Right.
Thank you.
All right, sure. All right, so I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All right. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Good night.
Favor.
Aye.
Right. There you go. Just don't go, because I think, I know I have to sign these, but I think you need to sign, some of you guys need to sign these too. Someone needs all our signatures.
He's in the hot seat this time of year.
Here's that one.